Never getting paid.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this Livingston City Commission meeting on September seventeenth. It is five thirty-one P M. Roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair Nudes.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Willich.
Here.
You have a corner.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll start out the the meeting like we do with every meeting with general public comment. This is for comment that is for items not on the agenda this evening or anything within the consent items. I will remind folks that individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. We do limit comments to four minutes per person. And when you come up, we'll ask you to sign in at the podium and then give us your name and address. So is there any public comment for items not on the agenda or in the consent items list? Welcome, Lindy.
Hi. There's no Kim.
Oh, get you one.
Thank you for giving me time two weeks ago, and tonight I'll be very, very brief. The reason I spoke last week, I wanted to lay the foundation of my study of our local history and the islands we have and everything. My concern tonight, and it has been for three years, is the signage down at the swimming pool. There's still two signs that say Sacagawea Lagoon, and it just isn't. Sacagawea Park is on Smithvillehurst Island, and the Sacagawea Lagoon starts at the head gate at Eighth Street, comes and goes around and stops at the stone bridge at Yellowstone Street. And then from Yellowstone Street on over to the swimming pool is Miles Park and on McLeod Island. And those signs remain, and I just, it just breaks my heart and is discouraging to approach everybody at every level, Park and Rec, Grant, when he was here a week, Shannon, and everybody all the way up, and even go upstairs, get the documentation to prove the map and prove the the legal written description that our lagoon is indeed Miles Park Lagoon. And if you guys would just do that, please, as one favor. I've been addressing it for three years. I love everybody. I love what's going on in Livingston with the new parks and recs department, but it gets really discouraging when you keep going to everybody knocking on doors and presenting the truth that the sign, not that the sign is wrong. I don't want me to put it in a negative light, but the sign should read Miles Park Lagoon. If you guys can just please get that corrected. I, it sounds miniscule, but you know, it's like we're not living stone or loving stem. Like people say, it's the Miles Park Lagoon. Please, if you guys do that before I die, then send me in. Anyway, the clock's ticking, but I love everything that's going on. But if you just please get that done. Three years of approaching everybody and climbing up the ladder, and you know, one of these days, the ladder's gonna tip over off the house. I just, I would like to live to see this. I need you corrected. I don't, I, my name is Lindy Gibson, not Karen. Okay. Yeah, thanks. I love you guys.
Anyone else for general public comment, items not on the agenda or the consent item or consent list? I don't see anyone in the room. I'll ask anyone online if they have any general public comment tonight. Feel free to come off mute and say your name. Raise your hand. Being none, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. All right, we'll move on to consent items. Commissioners, anything within the consent items like called?
Not only.
I am gonna pull consent item A. And then have a motion for the rest.
I'll move to consent items B and C.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Lyons and a second by Willich. All in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries. I pulled consent item A, which is the minute. Mr. Gager on page seven, I think there's part of a sentence missing at the very end. The city manager offered that.
That is correct. The rest of that sentence is the city manager offered that amending the growth policy occurs by a different process. So.
We'll get that added in. Thank you. Right. Anything else on the notes, folks? All right, I'll make the motion to approve consent item A. Second, second by Schwartz. All in favor?
I.
I motion carries. All right, we will go ahead and move on to proclamations. Okay, our first proclamation this evening is a proclamation of the Livingston City Commission IT Professionals Day in Livingston, Montana, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Whereas information technology professionals are essential to the smooth and efficient operations of local government, ensuring that critical systems and services are maintained, secured, and accessible to our employees and residents alike. And whereas the city of Livingston recognizes the invaluable contributions of IT professionals who, whose expertise and dedication help protect sensitive information, enable effective communication to support our community's daily functions. And whereas IT professionals are on the front lines of innovation, working tirelessly to implement new technologies, ensure that our city's digital digital infrastructure is reliable and resilient and often operating behind the scenes without recognition. And whereas in an increasingly digital world, the importance of secure and effect and efficient technology systems cannot be overstated. And the city of Livingston is fortunate to have skilled IT professionals who keep our systems operational, adaptable, and prepared for the future. And where, whereas IT professionals have played a key role in ensuring the city of Livingston's ability to deliver services remotely, adapt to new challenges, and maintain critical infrastructure and connectivity during emergencies, and now for therefore be it resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I carry kale chair do hereby proclaim September seventeenth, twenty twenty four as IT Professionals Day in Livingston, Montana. And further, I encourage all residents to take this opportunity to honor and celebrate our IT professionals for their individual contributions and to recognize the critical role they play in advancing technology, supporting our community, ensuring the smooth functioning of our city's infrastructure. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. I join you in celebrating our IT professionals, including the three that we have on staff jointly with Park County, led by Erica, our fantastic IT director.
Commissioners?
I'll second that. Definitely. I've worked with them.
Very good. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'd like to add also that I have a couple of friends in the IT world, and one of them wanted me to speak quickly about a big problem actually in the cyber cyber world, which is elder fraud, which is phishing scams, et cetera, committed against elderly citizens sixty and older, and that they are by and large the largest group that are targeted for scams to the tune of three point one billion dollars last year. The average loss, I think, in the state of Montana or people over the age of sixty is almost thirty-four thousand dollars. That's the average loss of people that are scammed out of money. So I have a group of links and some presentations that were given to me to submit, and they didn't make it into your email, unfortunately. They got filtered out by our IT people. But the, the, this is the FBI's elder fraud report. It's got some really incredible information about how to recognize scams and how to recognize phishing attempts. Then there's also the IC three dot gov. That's where you would go to 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 report any crimes that have been committed against you. And and just good helpful hints that the state and the federal government provides for keeping safe online, like smart clicks.
Thank you, Commissioner Willich.
Yeah.
Really informative.
So yeah, we can add that to, I think, the mix of this stuff.
We'll add it to the minutes, and then that'll be findable for everyone if you're interested in looking at that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have one more proclamation this evening, and this is the proclamation of the Livingston City Commission, thank a police officer day in Livingston, Montana, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas police officers dedicate their lives protecting and serving our community, often facing dangerous and challenging situations to ensure the safety and security of all residents. And whereas the members of the Livingston Police Department work tirelessly with professionalism and integrity to maintain public order, enforce laws, and provide critical emergency services to the citizens of Livingston. And whereas the efforts of police officers to build positive relationships within the community, enhance public safety, and protect the rights of all individuals are deserving of recognition and gratitude. And whereas police officers exemplify courage, resilience, and a steadfast commitment to serving others, often sacrificing time with their families and loved ones to fulfill their duties. And whereas their commitment to justice, bravery in the face of danger, and dedication to make making our neighborhoods safer places to live, work, and visit are invaluable to the well-being of our city. And now therefore be it resolved on behalf of the Livingston State Commission, I carry kale chair do hereby proclaim September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four as thank a police officer day in Livingston, Montana. And further, I encourage all residents to take an opportunity to thank a police officer. And I will look over this way and say, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gager.
I always thank a police officer. Andrew, if I haven't said it yet today, thank you.
Thank you for the support, and I'll make sure that we do that up the guys.
Thank you, Andrew. Anything else, Commissioner? All right, moving along. So we do have one scheduled public comment tonight, which is the Parks Master Plan Team and Process Introduction. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. I would invite David Locke from Stockwell Engineers. And Dave and his team were out all day today, traveling the parks with our park superintendent, getting the lay of the land. And in about fifteen minutes, they start the first of several focus group meetings that they'll have over the next couple of days with some of our, you know, more intense park users, sports organizations, event organizers, and that will kind of set the table. So I'll turn it over to Dave to talk a little bit about the project and the process that the community can expect over the next ten months or so.
Yeah, thanks, Grant. My name's David Locke, Lead Landscape Architect and Partner with Stockwell. We're helping out Grant and his team and working with the community on updating the park system master plan. We just started kind of really the kickoff phase of that, and the public input process is just getting started and underway. So our trip today and the next couple of days is to really visit all the parks. We went around with city staff today and visited all the parks. We're gonna continue to do that over the next couple of days. And then, as Grant said, we're gonna have a number of focus groups, meetings this evening and throughout the day tomorrow to gather feedback, initial feedback of what people think about the park system, what they'd like, what they like, what they'd like to see improved, and some of their opinions on that. Then we will be at the farmer's market tomorrow night from four thirty to seven thirty at the city booth there to have, we'll have boards and sticky notes and pens for people to leave comments. We'll have a map of the city and the park system out and really encourage the public to stop by and give their feedback on things that they love about Livingston parks, things that they'd like to see improved, and what are some maybe favorite pastimes, some favorite memories that they'd like to share with us as a part of the park system. From there, we're gonna be using this information to really educate our questions for a community-wide survey, which will be sent out in the next month or so. And that'll be something that will work with Grant and his team on getting out to the city email and getting it posted at City Hall Library to make sure that we get as much public comment and feedback, a little bit more in-depth questions. Based on the information and some of the trends that we start to see over the next couple of days, we'll use that information to really ask more pointed questions of the community. And so, once we get those results back here towards the end of this year, then we'll start to analyze that, come forth with initial recommendations, have another public meeting to present our findings, and start to kind of formulate a plan, steps, short-term, long-term goals, and an outline of capital costs associated with those recommendations. But the the end report will really be a step-by-step process that will work with the community and city staff determining, you know, what are those goals, and how do we achieve those goals? Is that something that needs to happen right away? Or is it something that we've got some time, or it's gonna take some time to come to fruition? So, and that report will be the first part of next year. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
I have two questions. I think you guys touched on it. The timeline for this master plan design is probably next year.
First part of next year, yeah. So when we put out the community-wide survey, which will be out next month, we leave that open for a period of two to four weeks, just making sure that we, you know, we'll probably do two different email blasts with the city Facebook posts to get as much community feedback as we can. And then, once we get that information, we go through and analyze everything, pair it with what we saw here in terms of our initial recommendations, and start to put that into a presentable report and and presentation that will come back and and present to the public. That'll be the first part of of next year, I'd say. I can't remember exactly when we had their timeline, January or so. And then we'll then take that and put that into a report, which will take a couple of months. We'll go through a couple draft iterations like that. So it'd be, I'd say, springtime of next year.
Cool, thank you. The other question I had is when was the last time we had a Parks Master Plan?
I think it was twenty twelve?
Yeah, twenty eleven, twenty twelve.
Yeah, twenty twelve. So, and usually you like to update those at least every ten years. So, so certainly, you know, in line with 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 that recommendation. You wanna see kind of what you've done, if you've been able to cross some of those things off the list. And okay, now that, you know, maybe some of those initial items have now impacted changes that potentially weren't anticipated. You know, a lot can happen in ten years. And so it's always good to get those plans updated.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a question. What's the process here? Like, what's, what are you looking for? This, from my understanding from Mr. Gager, is that we're just getting an introduction of the team and the process tonight. And were you looking for any input from us?
We welcome any input the commission may have. But yeah, as the chair noted, this really is to kind of introduce you to the team, similar to what we did for downtown master plan, kind of start the process and also raise some awareness amongst members of the public of the event tomorrow evening and then survey coming out as well.
And correct me. Will it be at the Civic Center? Are we going, presentation there is it just at the?
So there is the farmer's market from four thirty until six. Then we do have the Civic Center booked out from six to eight.
Six to eight, okay. So we want to make sure that got out there.
Yeah, I would certainly encourage you guys, you know, to come to, you know, the focus group meetings or to the, the farmer's market. So we let, you know, we, we worked with Grant on formulating, you know, the invites of the focus groups, certainly want Commissioner support and input at those, at those meetings.
Can I ask some, do you really want all the commissioners to come to these things that are?
It would actually be ideal, maybe, if we could set up some alternate time for commissioners.
Right. So are you able to do that for the commission, since we won't be coming to the focus groups?
Absolutely.
Okay. I do have some questions, but it might be from Mr. Gager. Go ahead. So these are some questions that came up also when we, when Quentin and I were at the farmer's, excuse me, Commissioner Schwartz, and I were at the farmer's market last week. Will trail substrate be included in the conversations? Because I've heard more than once at the farmer's market this summer, concerns about pea gravel specifically, not being super safe, or like not user-friendly for people with different abilities.
So trail linkages to the parks are generally included in the scope of work, so I would imagine.
And I mean, like, actual substrate, like what the trails are made of, because some of the surfaces are not friendly to kids or people on wheels.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Also, will Miles Park be included? That was a question that we specifically got up there. Great. To Lindy's point, will signs be included, sign updates?
Yes, and as part of a much larger, now that we have the logo and the branding largely solidified, we can begin to move forward with the larger wayfinding and signage project that's included in the growth policy.
Is it possible for somebody at the city to follow up with Lindy, just?
Yes.
I want to make sure she knows where we're at since she left.
And please know, we do have a Miles slash Sacagawea Lagoon sign that our team is going to put up as soon as they can get to.
I just wanted her to know that we're responding, because I know she's been waiting a long time. And we were waiting for a lot of things to fall in place as a city before we could update. So I want her to know she's being heard. Also, are there ways that people are gonna be able to engage besides just online at the farmer's market, recognizing and the focus groups? Because there's a lot of people that's outside of those three demographics that are gonna want to engage.
Yeah, we'll also have paper copies of the survey. And then, Dave, I don't know if you have any other.
Yeah, the the community-wide survey that we put out will print paper copies that people can come in and fill in if they don't want to do it online. But the the focus groups and the farmer's market, what the farmer's market will have boards so that people can write down comments. But the input, if they don't attend a focus group meeting or the farmer's market, the input will come then through the community-wide survey.
Or also, again, at the second public meeting, which I know, again, is another public meeting.
I just, I'm just thinking, from an equity stance, it's important to reach people like lots of different ways, because not everybody is watching Facebook for city updates, right? Or sign up to a newsletter. And I'm curious about the process now that we don't have a parks committee or a tree board, who is gonna be reviewing the drafts before it comes to the city commission?
You know, that's a very excellent question. You know, some of that will happen at a staff level. We also have worked with some, we've established some focus groups, as I mentioned. And so I imagine that we will also lean on them throughout the process as well for, you know, just kind of different touch points and checking in. Again, because people that, you know, whether they're event organizers or, you know, organized sports folks, or, you know, kind of other power users of the park, there are just several different filters that will send the recommendations through.
I just realized it's a different process than any of the other plans that we've had, because we've always had boards, or we have committees that come through the commission to be voted on, like executive committees. And so this doesn't have any. This is just different, because there's no commission involvement in helping select who's reviewing it before it gets to us. So it's just a little bit different.
Yeah, and we, I did present to the Consolidated Land Use Board last Wednesday about the project, because this is a bit of a planning exercise. And so they are, they are certainly aware of it. And, you know, your, your point is noted. That may prove to be an appropriate venue as well to to get more public feedback and comment. So I appreciate the suggestion.
Yeah, the, I think some of the things to note is that we're coming up on a year, I think, a couple months off the year with those two boards, the parks board and the trail board, or, excuse me, the tree board. And so folks are looking for a way to engage with the city at a deeper level than what they've had the opportunity to for a long time. The other thing that was brought up to Commissioner Schwartz and I about park development on the north side is reservoir park, of course. Could you address how like reservoir park is gonna be rolled into this, since there's like a parallel planning process happening?
Yeah, absolutely. So there are several parks that actually are not included in this Parks Master Plan scope aboard Kate Vanell Park and Reservoir Park specifically, because Kate Vanell Park is part of the Wellness Center project and Reservoir. We are trying a different process, because it largely is an undeveloped piece of land at this point. So those two processes will stand outside of this Parks Master Plan process.
Great. And then the other thing, just to note, this plan won't address it, but I think it's important to say, since it came from our side residents, was the that as we develop things on the north side, we still are not talking about a crossing. And so it continues to put a burden on the folks that rely on that to get home, those crossings to get home. So just, I don't expect that this plan's gonna fix that, but I think it's important to address that the public has come up to commissioners and said that repeatedly.
Absolutely. And I'm receiving the same feedback about the importance of crossing. And please know, at a staff level, we are continuing to work on that in the absence of federal funding and plotting a path forward that does not include federal funding. So please expect to see more of that in front of you in the coming months.
And we can include that as a part of the recommendations as well, because the more reports that you can note that, it just helps kind of make awareness of that. So we can certainly include that as a part of it.
I'm sure people will bring it up at the public meetings.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. That's all that I have at this time. Thanks, Yild. Thank you. I think I just have one question. A lot of really great questions have already been asked. In the survey, just because we sort of have this one public meeting that's happening. In the survey, will there be a section in that survey that's just like an open comment section to give ideas and thoughts, like, we really want to see this in this location? And so there'll be that, people will be allowed to do that through the survey.
Yes, yes.
Great. Any other questions?
Looking forward to it. Yeah.
Going for the process.
Sounds good. Yeah, look forward to seeing you tomorrow. All right. Sounds good. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Yep.
All right, so we will move on to action item A, which is a discussion of regional water system preliminary engineering report. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is a bit of a follow-up to a contract that you folks awarded midsummer. And that in itself is a follow-up to a recently completed project, the regional sewer system. And as we discussed during the approval of the regional sewer project when I first joined in twenty twenty-two, a regional water project would be not long behind due to statutory requirements to deliver services to annex properties. And so I would invite Public Works Director Shannon Holmes and and his team, including our city engineer Matt McGee, to come and and share a little bit of an update on some progress that's been made on the regional water project since the contractor's awarded about two months ago. Shannon.
So, well, good evening, Matt and Chair and members of the commission. It's been a little while since we've been up in front of you. So hope everybody's had a nice summer. Myself, Matt, and Adam over here, excited to present on two necessary water system improvement projects for our northeast residents of town. As Mr. Gager mentioned, the first would be the regional water preliminary engineering report, which TDNH has just gotten started on, and we'll give you a PowerPoint over that here shortly. And then the second important project is actually the Bennett Street Water Loop, which would provide some much-needed redundancy on that part of town as well. So certainly will be available after the presentation to answer any questions you'll have as well. And and I'll turn it over to Matt.
Good. Thank you. Good evening.
Commissioner Gager, Mr. Gager and Commissioners, that was a pretty good opening summary there, what I kind of wanted to talk about. I want to mention that this is an MSET-funded PER. They funded forty, eighty percent, and the, and the city funded twenty percent as a match. And as Mr. Gager mentioned, this is kind of step two of two. Last year, we completed the regional sewer in September. Uh, and that was a big extension project. Um, and that brought us to um now do looking at the water. So we're just in the early stages of planning there and the PR is kind of the first step to use as a tool for funding and public engagement. Um, and so this first slide is just kind of the roadmap for the the slides to come here. We'll look at the existing system for the project limits. Um, the early alternatives that we started to consider, um, project schedule just for the PER. Um, our preliminary plan for public engagement, and then as Shannon mentioned, kind of just a quick touch on the Bennett Street Water Loop extension that we're just starting designing to. Um, so as you may remember, um, we're we're talking about three developments here and we've got Green Acres subdivision, Montag subdivision, and then the Sleeping Giant development. Um, Green Acres is the only one that's currently on the city's public water system. Um, and then Montag and Sleeping Giant are on shared private wells. Um, and we've talked a little bit about the Green Acres water when we did the project specific PER, but some of the issues there is that there's um some dead end mains and I'll show some figures later in the presentation here um that really creates some issues for that subdivision. One is just kind of water quality and stagnation. Um, another one is just if you have a main break on those dead ends, it's hard one to get fire flows. Um, have inadequate fire flows because it's not looped and have redundancy in the system there. Um, and then one thing we looked at during the sewer project was the valves in the water system. We actually ended up adding a valve um, because we were getting some water main breaks during the sewer project, just as construction equipment was on the the water main, we were getting breaks. Um, so it's a pretty fragile system. It's it's near the end of its design life. And the other thing with these dead ends that they just ran up some of the streets in Green Acres and so there's three streets where um, residents on the other side of the block, their water service runs through, as you guys probably know, neighboring properties. So if there ever was an issue with their water service, um, kind of being hard deal, they'd have to dig through their neighbor's property. So looking at trying to eliminate that. Um, and then one thing that didn't make the presentation here, but all of the water main in Green Acres is six inch. Um, and the DQ minimum size is eight inch, so it's undersized. And um, hydraulically kind of inadequate without looping. So that's kind of the major points with the Greenacre system. Um, the Montag and Sleeping Giant, we learned a lot about during the sewer project. Those are on shared wells and they run down the alleys. There's not a lot of records there um of how it was built, where it runs. Um, so we we gained some information there and we look forward to having some public meetings to, I know some of the residents have plans, they run their systems, so they kind of know it, but learning more about that. Um. Um, but basically, the water quality there, I know during the sewer project, Commissioner Lyons had mentioned that eliminating all those septic systems was sign it, the city acting as a steward to the river and I, in that same vein here, I think eliminating these wells that could be potentially contaminated from the local septic systems that would now eliminated this is a good thing. It's another positive for the project. Um, and this map that we have up here kind of shows the local um permits that have been approved from sixty eight through twenty twenty. So um, we had about a hundred and fifty of them in our project last year. Um, the Sleeping Giant development has not yet connected. They weren't quite ready to go in and connect, but we've stubbed out their preferred locations so that they can connect to the sewer when they're ready. Um, so moving on to some preliminary alternatives here, um, and we are pretty early in this process, but one is to basically show the minimum improvements that we could do right now, and that is kind of leaving Green Acres as it is, adding some hydrants and some valves potentially, and then running eight inch mains um, through Sleeping Giant and Montag. And what that leaves out and I'll kind of show an alternative to is the being in Green Acres that we talked about and then the water main and wine glass that's lately been extended up north has a good opportunity to bring another loop up to that part of town. Um. So that's kind of the bare minimum alternative. And then as we go into what we now call alternative two, it kind of shows the full meal where you are going to extend down to the wine glass and provide loops and mains in front of everybody's house. Um, and that would be probably the far end of our alternatives and and then we can make up hybrid alternatives that would cover both of these as we talk to the public and get their input. So I think when we bring this back to you as a draft report, you'll see a handful of alternatives that range between these two. Um, this schedules a little bit outdated because we thought we might be talking to y'all last month. Um, but I don't think it's impacted on the bottom line, so the kickoff meeting with the city is going to likely happen next week. As I said, we've kind of got to start on the PR um over the summer, just kind of collecting some information and drafting the initial alternatives. Um, I think we're still on on course for the September desktop review and then our plan over the next three months is to have three public meetings um, with the residences and then go through these alternatives and like I said, gain information about the systems that are out there. Um, and the goal is to still finalize the report by the end of the year. We left construction as kind of a TBD because I think we'll learn a lot more about what that's going to look like as we develop the report. Anything to add, say, Shannon, or I?
I, so obviously pub- public input's a very significant part of this project. And so we will, we'll probably host our meetings at the fieldhouse and we'll make sure that they're in the evenings when people are home from work and more than likely have a virtual um option for people to attend as well. We want, we want as many folks to be able to attend and provide comments as we can.
Yeah, and so that kind of goes into that next one, and that was sort of our program with the last, the sewer project, and that worked really well, was having evening meetings and um, and I think just to tag on to that, doing a PER is really a good tool for funding in the future. Um, and that was one of the big reasons for going through this planning process. Um, and then here's the, sorry, this last slide is just the Bennett Water Loop Extension Project. Um, this, it connects some existing mains, one in Bennett Street and then over to US Highway eighty nine. Overall, this is a pretty straightforward project. It's about seven hundred feet of ten inch pipe. Um, the one challenge that we've found right now is that we will need to bore under the railroad. There is no casing at that location, so. Um, we're, we've started kind of talking with BNSF and MDT on some other projects and kind of told them this one's coming, so that'll be, there'll be a heavy agency engagement there. Um, but we did get started on this. We surveyed the limits last week and we'll start designing agency coordination right now.
No, nothing. Just this, this benefits the hospital, so this gives us uh reduces a dead end main by about eleven hundred feet. So from O Street is where that main starts, so that'll help with hospital and it'll also help with the wellness center significantly, and this also complements the regional water uh extension project that we are are going to be planning to do through the PR process. So big, big benefit to the east end of town.
And that's sort of on a similar design schedule into the year. Um, because we're hoping that this in parallel with the INI study would be twenty twenty five construction. So bidding early next year and hopefully getting both those projects. So I think that's the end of the presentation. We're happy to take any questions on either project.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Mr. Gager, what are you looking for from us this evening?
Uh, you know, we uh, we do welcome any questions or feedback that the commission may wish to offer at this time. Uh, again, that, you know, we recognize the the impact that the regional sewer project had on residents in this area of town and uh recognizing that, wanted to um, you know, raise awareness of this early, let the community know that this is something that we are actively working on um, and follow up to that other project. And so uh, we'll stand for any questions you may have, more comments.
Thank you. Commissioners.
Yeah, just one, um, just to clarify, where exactly is Sleeping Giant?
Hmm.
Um, I think I know, but because there's a sleeping giant past, uh.
It's the trailer park.
It's the trailers.
Your Skilman.
Okay, that.
Trailer park is between Miles and Garnier. Yeah, so on that alternative two map, it's up.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be that blue line on Miles down to Miller.
Okay, down Miller, Frank Street, McCall, right on that, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, because there's a sleeping giant estates out west of town, so.
They're Alphila Creek.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So this Sleeping Giant community, I'm not sure if you're aware, but um, Neighbor Works Montana worked with them similar to the View Vista community, so. Um, we've been partners with them, you know, really started with View Vista and it continued with the regional sewer project and and concluding them in this PER uh was very important to the city and for Neighbor Works and the residents there, so.
Yeah, because they're boiling, the water's clean and stuff, so I just wanted to make, I thought I knew where it was. I just wanted to, you know, in my mind, know where exactly it's at and people listening at home. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything, Commissioner Lyons? Oh, I guess I you were giving, Vice Chair Noots.
Um, I have a question. I think you said that eight inch mains were required now by DEQ.
That's the minimum, yeah.
So I'm curious, like, why over on Wine Glass Lane, we have new six inch mains and not paratene if eight inches the requirement?
Yeah, and I apologize, our legend is a little bit difficult. We kind of threw these together.
Um, oh, is that actually an eight inch?
It's actually an eight inch because it's not new.
Okay, thank you.
That's existing.
We'll clarify this map a little better in the report, but.
Thank you. So it's, I just misread the, so the six inch or like the Miles Lane and Garnier, or are those eight inch?
Yeah, so if you go to alternative one.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, yeah, so your six inch, I can't, is Maple ten?
No.
And it's all six inch.
Six, six inch, the Bigford Lane um is all the ten inch AC pipe that was put in in nineteen fifty nine. But anything feeding Brookstone, so the existing orange from say Miles towards um down Garnier to Bennett in that area is all eight inch that was put in about six years ago.
Right. When they developed that.
So all the six inches just.
The new six inch and the eight inch lines are like very similar in color and.
Yeah, they're supposed to be double lines, but they're not showing up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um. That was one question I had. The other the other is I just the importance of public outreach. I'm glad you all have a plan. I know this part of town is persistent in their um responses to the commission about the desire for really effective public engagement. So the more that can be the focus, the better, I think, for the commission to like, comments are better landing with you, who can actually help them than us. Um, so thank you. And the last thought that I have really is, um, well, not the last thought, but one thought is just recognizing how much disruption is happening in this part of town. Um, with the water and now the sewer and then soon the wellness center. And I think it's probably going to get pretty fatiguing pretty quickly. In addition, that school off of Loma Lane that's in the county, I think um, it'd be great if we had a plan for this part of town to minimize disruption for, you know, their neighborhood and their way of life. I think it's going to get probably pretty old, pretty fast. Um, so if there's a way we can coordinate work on projects that doesn't affect people's quality of life, I think that could be fantastic. Well, like meeting the needs of the people who live there, just recognizing that it's going to be a lot of action for a while, that they can't really escape, so. That's to make two cents. What's up?
That's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's ways to mitigate that. That's stuff you think about all the time, but just putting that in the front of the room, I think is helpful, maybe. That's all. Ayl.
If I may add, you know, if they do it the way they did it on my street two years ago, I'd be very happy. It was an outstanding job with minimal impact, so.
You know, we, we had, we had a rough start with the Montag residents through the regional sewer project. And um, we got, got to meet a lot of those, uh, all those folks through that process and, you know, I'm really looking for the city to really represent itself well and be very open and transparent. Um, I think it's important to say that, you know, we're, we're not defining a construction timeline for this yet. We, we really need to go through the PER process, figure out all the alignments, the probable cost estimates. And then this, this document really puts us in a great position for, for going after uh grants similar to the ARCA funding that we received for, you know, the regional sewer. So our goal is to obviously bring the cost of this project as low as we possibly can for their, for the folks in this area. But back to what Mr. Gager said, state law requires us to be planning to provide critical infrastructure for newly annexed properties within a reasonable time, which is, I think, defined it as a five year period. So this, this plan really puts us, allows us to comply with that state law requirement. And um, once it's complete, um, the commission, the residents of that area know where the water mains are going to be put in the ground. They know approximately what that cost estimate's going to be and how we're going to share those costs to, to make it come to fruition, so.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons?
Um, I really appreciate uh Vice Chair Noots' comment about like thinking about how disruptive this is going to be. You know, I think like it was emotionally disruptive when they were annexed into town. And um, you know, we've all, you've experienced that through the outreach and the interactions they've done. Um, and then this process is going to be the time where it's physically disruptive. And um, so I think like considering a careful, like carefully considering sequencing and how these impacts are going to be compounding and and um, so forth, I think is very important, but you know, you all are experts at that. Um, but I appreciate that comment. I think that that's um, spot on. You know, I know that there's no intention at this table of um any imminent annexation in the future of Livingston. But we need to think about this as a model and how folks will consider what annexation looks like if that ever comes to fruition. So this is our, our opportunity to show what that process looks like if, if that ever were to happen again. Um, and so not that you need any more stress, but this is, th- this is going to be, this is going to be how model of annexation is conceived in the medium and long term future. Uh, so while that's a huge responsibility, it's also an opportunity. Um, and I'm just kind of outline, these might be things that you're already considered, considering, but uh, just wanted to kind of outline the importance of how this might go because it really does prove, it, it creates a model of what annexation looks like in Livingston, and so we need to be careful with that responsibility.
Hmm.
So I, I appreciate your comment very much and you're probably aware of this, but you know, we have about twenty residents that off of Loma Lane and Bigford Lane that are still in the county. We're going to have water, a water system totally surrounded there, so the thought of maybe that being a possibility in the future is certainly going to go into the planning phases of where the water mains are going to be placed and, and you know, state law requires if a septic system fails, they're going to have to get the cost of replacing that septic system versus connecting to the city infrastructure based on, you know, the three hundred foot distance and the same could apply for a well going dry or a well being contaminated, so um I appreciate that. That thought is in our minds and and it's going to be brought out and and I wouldn't be surprised if some of those residents don't attend uh, some of the public meetings, just, just to be in the loop of what's happening.
Unintended or?
And I think as I mentioned, this is part two of two and I, we learned a lot.
And I think as I mentioned, this is part two of two and I, we learned a lot, meeting with them on the sewer and what worked, but didn't and. It's just. A lot of, a lot of meetings, I mean, we met weekly during construction, we met monthly. All the way through planning and that goes a long way with them too.
It, it does that, that's how, that's how you build trust by doing that consistently, well, I, I was actually just giving a presentation. In my day job um about community engagement, uh and I'm just gonna share one, one element. That that engagement and, and that ma- maintenance of trust isn't only critical at the beginning. But it's critical that you continue to share that information as, as things go on and you're no longer statutorily required to do that community engagement. That, that trust will erode really quickly if they stop hearing from you. Um and even if you don't need any more information from them, you can provide them with updates of what's happening. And that is a really critical component of maintaining that trust.
I like to say that I've had a seven year marriage with Green Acres residents and unfortunately um. We didn't have that uh with the Montag residents and their annexation on what September seventh, twenty twenty one. We, we did a, a, a P E R for the Green Acres residents, it did not include the Montag residents at the time, so. I feel like, I don't wanna speak for the Green Acres residents, but I feel like we've established a level of trust. With them, with that, that community uh interaction.
Right.
And we hope to build that, but the Montag residents through this one.
And it's, it's, it's hard won and easily lost, as I'm sure you're aware, um so just keep that in mind and, and again. Um to just reiterate my original point, this is, this is the model that will be shared with, with any county residents that are ever. Ever here get wind of, of uh concept of annexation, so. It's a huge responsibility, but a big opportunity.
Yeah.
I do.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons, Commissioner Williams, anything?
Um, no, I'm just kind of digesting what I got going on here, I, I guess a quick question is when, do you know the six eight, uh six inch in Green Acres? Which is, I guess, not allowable anymore, not permissible, a lot of water, uh when was that put in?
In the early sixties. So the A C pipe, the ten inch that connected to the city was done in nineteen fifty nine and. Shortly thereafter, they created the network as six inch off of that ten inch A C pipe, so it's. It's getting past its useful life and being that it's undersized and not looped um. There's a lot of room for improvement.
I would add a couple of things, um go ahead. To Commissioner Lyons' point. And it was like less than a year ago, I was knocking on doors in Green Acres and Montag. And I would say that I don't think that all of the community is trusting in the city. Cause people said some pretty frank, honest things to me, which is great, and I appreciate it, but not everybody is trusting the city yet. So I think we still have work to do to repair, cause those people are Livingston residents, um and even if they weren't, they still matter, but they are Livingston residents, and so we should listen to them. I don't know if you also heard that, but I certainly did. Uh emotional disruption was a good descriptor, I think, too, I think people still feel um. Like they need some more information, obviously, we can't go back in time and like. Redo history or anything like that, but I think we can, you know, sort of eat some humble pie where we. Weren't the best communicators as a city, all of us included, right, eat some humble pie, own our mistakes and um. Work to do better and moving forward, um the other thing is I really appreciated your comment about how silence is a way to. Erode trust and there's some very large projects on that sort of side of town that the public hasn't heard about for a while. That are coming, specifically the Wellness Center, um that's concerning. Because it's gonna be very, very impactful to the people everywhere, but especially in that part of town, so if there is a way to like. Communicate openly and transparently with the public about all of these projects, I think that will go a long way. Otherwise, it doesn't look good. We're not hiding anything, but it, it could appear that we are if we're not talking openly about where things are, so thank you for offering that, Commissioner Lyons. I totally agree.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, I think you've asked all my questions.
But I think there's one more question for you, are you gonna allow the public to speak, say, see Green Acres residents here?
I'm just headed in that direction.
I wanna make sure they have a chance.
Absolutely, that is an action item and we absolutely will do that.
Thank you.
Um, okay, yes. So we will go ahead now, we don't, we're not looking for motion this evening. Um but I do wanna open it up to public comment, this is a, an action item this evening, so gentlemen, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Maybe stick around through this little portion, that'd be great. Um and if there's any public comment, we'll start in the room, come on up, put your name and. Sign in there and then give us your name and address.
And I was not trying to put pressure on Green Acres residents.
Yeah, that's because we're Montag.
Sorry, Patty. My, I'm, it's my mistake, Montag, gonna know.
That's okay. I call it Montague.
I wanted to ask you.
I have no idea, I've been there for a hundred.
So if you live there, you get to dictate.
Surveyors call.
Montague.
And.
So Patty, for the record.
Patty Smith.
Thank you.
One fifteen, All Spa. Um, and I've dealt with, I know what Mr. Lyons means about emotional. Stress, cause of the fourplex that went in across from my house, I swear, like every other week, they were digging up All Spa Street. And I don't know who the engineering firm was, it wasn't T D and H, that's for sure. Um but I was never notified when they were gonna be closing my street. Um and so it was very. I never knew if I was gonna be able to get out or not, and they would never come and say, we're gonna have your street closed today, do you wanna get a car out or anything? Um so yeah, but um I heard them say that. I thought Matt said that we would have to abandon our wells and I was under the understanding that. Even if we hook up the city water, we could still use our well to water our lawns.
Um, so what I'm gonna have you do is keep talking. Ask questions and then we'll see.
I want to say that Shannon Holmes still hasn't earned my trust yet because when we were annexed into the city and the first. Time that we heard that we were gonna have to be a part of the sewer project. I went to the first meeting and he, he said there would be two more meetings and there were no more meetings. Um except the one saying, hey, we're gonna start hooking you up to the sewer in February. So I really hope they followed through this time and have the meetings. Because Montague ad- addition did not get the, the. Time to learn what was going on and everything like Green Acres did, so thank you.
Thank you, Patty. More public comment in the room, come on up, if you'll sign in and then just give us your name and address for the record.
Hey, I'm Patty Altman, um I'm a resident of Montague slash Montag. Um, I spoke at the commission meeting a year or two ago about um the lack of communication specifically for the, the Montag residents at the time. Um. And the city promised they would do a better job this next time around, so I'm really glad to hear, you know, some of the things that were said tonight about that. I would just like a couple reminders, um. And this is feedback that I got um from some of the local people in my neighborhood, mostly elderly people. They're not on Facebook, they don't know how to get on the internet to look at the city website. Um so I would just ask when these meetings are scheduled that. In addition to all the other great things that you guys do, that everyone who's tech savvy sees that, that you take these people into consideration. You know, maybe a mailing to the round boxes, some signs in the neighborhood. Um those sorts of things, the other thing I would ask is that, and I think I heard um either Shannon or Matt say that the. These first series of meetings would be scheduled, you know, a date and a time that are. Appropriate that people can attend, because the weekly meeting that we have for the sewer extension project, we're on Tuesday mornings at nine o'clock, so if you're retired, it's great. But if you work, you can, you never have the opportunity to go and hear what's said and. There was, I mean. Sometimes minutes would go up on the city website, but that wasn't consistent in terms of keeping. People engaged and informed if they were not able to attend the meeting, so I would just like to ask the city to do a better job with that this time also. And then the other thing I kinda wanna comment on is just the timeline, um. I know you all know, we just wrapped up the sewer project, um. We just had our whole backyard dug up four months ago, um and put it all back together. As it did many other people in our neighborhood and we're a year out from having all the roads completely torn up. Um we went from February until last August with the roads being a disaster, I know you guys all know that. It was like a war zone sometimes in Green Acres for people just trying to get out their driveways. Um so I would want to hear in these meetings how that's not going to happen the next time around, how the city's gonna do a better job with that. Um, the other thing is I would just like to ask the city to be um. Uh just kind of sensitive to the financial impact that this has on a lot of the residents, again, many who are elderly. On a fixed income that. Had to shell out, you know, a fairly significant amount of money just recently for the sewer project, um. Both for the city mains and then they had to shell out more money to get their backyards dug up and the sewer lines installed in their backyards, and so everyone has taken. Financial hit. Very recently because of the sewer project, so I would just like to ask the city to be kind of um. Transparent about what the financial costs are gonna be to the residents, so that people know going well in, in advance going into this. What our share, the cost is gonna be, um I think that's really important and I think if that happens, then maybe. The city will be able to regain a little bit of the trust because I think there's people in um. Both neighborhoods, Montague and Green Acres, that were not happy with how the sewer project was handled, so. The only other thing I will mention, and I, I know what you said Grant about um. Once it, once the area is annexed, there's a certain amount of time where you have to provide the infrastructure. And I don't know whether this was accurate or not, but I will say that the question, and I think you're gonna get this question at these meetings. Why did we separate out the sewer and the water if we're gonna turn around and do them so close together? And so we were told at multiple, on multiple occasions by. City of Livingston employees at these weekly meetings, people would ask, why, why are we, you know, why are we not doing the water too? Um and it was stated on multiple occasions that. That the water was not a priority for the city of Livingston, Livingston, that it would be three to five years before. This water project started, whether that's accurate or not, I have no idea, I'm just letting you know that that was said and, and I think you're gonna get. Questions about that because honestly, it makes no sense to me why I have to pay. You know, thousands of dollars to get my backyard dug up and thousands of dollars to contribute to the city sewer mains and I've gotta turn around. A year later and do it all over again. It doesn't make sense to me, but I don't know much about that, so that's all I can say.
Thank you, Patty, right on time too, nicely done and really wonderful feedback, thank you. Anyone else in the room? We'll go online, uh is there anyone online that would like to make public comment? You can feel free to raise your hand or just come off mute and give us your name. Ask one more time online. Or in the room? Being on, we'll go ahead and post public comment, got a couple of questions in there, I'd like to try to get answered if that works for us.
We can ask a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Yes, this is for Patty number two.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Cause there's, because not everybody in, my, everybody in Montague is named Patty, but.
Everybody tonight is.
And we're on the same block.
Incredible.
Purpleish as well.
That's hard for HOA rules right there, got me named Patty. How much advance notice did you have about the cost for? The sewer project, you, cause you made a point that you, it would be nice to have as much lead time as possible to financially prepare.
Have been the, from the city with a. Lawn and it had every property listed out and it had what your cost would be based on your square footage. And then we had, I think about a month. To decide whether we were going to pay upfront and save some money in the long run. And I'll just tell you, we, me and my husband, we paid ninety thousand dollars for that. And in doing so, we saved ourselves money over the course of twenty years, because if we had allowed it to raise our taxes. That would have been over twenty thousand dollars over the course of twenty years with interest from the law and such.
Okay.
We had about a month come up with that.
Okay. I just wanna repeat this for the recording, for the record, so you had about a month. From the time you had something in writing till you and your household members had to make a decision about how you were gonna finance the cost. And for your individual property, it was nine thousand if you could pay in one. One, yeah, one payment, okay, thank you, that's helpful. Right, yep, right.
Finance it by having your taxes raised.
Thank you, I just, that's helpful to hear the timeline, thank you, sorry, thank you.
Of course. Um, so Patty number one asks. About wells and if they would be, if we would have to abandon wells or could they still be used for irrigation purposes?
Um, we do have allowances for irrigation wells within city code and so um they are not permitted, I will, I can say that. Individual properties, I, I don't have the information at my hand to comment on specific properties, but irrigation wells do exist.
Um, and if somebody wanted more information about a specific property, they may be able to reach out to you.
Department or to my office as well.
Okay, then you can look that specific property up. Um and then, and I don't know if we're. If we have the information to answer this tonight or if we're come, um the, why did we separate the two projects? Why did we do one and not the other at the same time?
Uh you know, I've, I've got the public works director here, my understanding, and I'll, I'll allow him and, and the team to chime in if they see fit, but my understanding is, is really, there was. Uh a few things at play, um but one really was that large cost uh burden that, that residents would face from doing. All the work at once, um and there was, you know, kind of an effort, we heard tonight that it would be about nine thousand, so. Or it was about nine thousand, one person's experience, so to have that additional cost burden all at one time, uh I think. Um you know, my predecessor and, and some others made it a determination that that would be perhaps a little dangerous for the community.
Okay. And I'll, I'm gonna ask one more question, which I feel like was maybe in some of these comments, um. Will the water project be as disruptive as the sewer project? With the digging, like the roads and the yards and the.
Uh if fundamentally, they are very similar projects, unfortunately, and so, um but I think we heard from uh, you know, the, the director and, and. The city engineer that there were some lessons learned and um I, I think we, we can do perhaps a little better, but. Unfortunately, we're digging up roads and connecting houses to pipes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any, any last comments, questions?
I'll just triplicate with everybody else that the public information is a critical component. Um at least from my world of wildland fire, like that's a. That's a certain chapter of the incident command handbook is public information officer and if you have more data, more information. Just helps, it, it just helps people feel better. So that's all I have to, thank you.
Over communication is key. All right, anything else, commissioners?
I would say that I also had to connect to, to city sewer and so I have sympathy for the disrupt. The, the disruptive nature of causes and for the financial burden, so um I personally went through that and so I'm. Sensitive to uh what you all are experiencing. Um, you know, I think it's, it's good for us to have. This conversation publicly because it, it really does, I think, uh create some accountability on, at least on, on this side of the table. Um and I, I, I think that I speak for all my fellow commissioners that we feel that accountability and we hope that we can. Um continue to improve the process and have it be less disruptive.
Anything else?
I would um offer. Uh supportive comments to the Patties about the roads. They were so bad, I, it's no secret, I live on the north side, I would drive through about once a week just to. See how it was going with the roads and it was embarrassing how bad they were, um people don't live in the city to have roads like that. If roads like that were in the county, people would be coming to the county commissioners every meeting and they probably do, and so um if there is a way.
If roads like that were in the county, people would be coming to the county commissioners every meeting and they probably do. And so, um, if there is a way. You know, it'd be great if there's a way so that all the roads weren't like that at once, so that people in the neighborhood had at least like. I, and I don't know, I'm not like a road expert or anything, but I'm sure there's folks in the room who are. So if there's some way to mitigate so that not everything is torn up at the same time to make it a little easier for you folks, that sure would be nice. Cause that was really bad. I agree. The ruts were like. Like. Made Nebraska roads look. Look smooth. Yep. Yes.
I saw some nasty puddles.
Mm-hmm, it was bad.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you for coming in this evening, all of you. Well, let's move on then. No, no motion needed here. So we're moving on to action item B. Uh, which is ordinance thirty fifty-five. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter two of the Livingston Municipal Code. Entitled Government and Administration. To conform noticing provisions to state law, reflect the existence of the city clerk position. Modify city commission voting rules, acknowledge a new federal holiday and make technical and conforming changes. Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Cale. The item for you this evening, as you noted, is ordinance three zero five five, which events chapter two of the Livingston Municipal Code. Uh, to reflect some recent operational changes as well as statutory changes that were made in the uh. Recently ended legislative session and so uh, attached to the staff report is a uh, red line of. Chapter two or the effective portions thereof, I can clarify. And um, primarily we are replacing uh, references to recording secretary with city clerk. Um, as you know, we have uh, included now full-time city clerk in the budget. And uh, and then uh, in importantly for uh, for you folks. Um, section two dash one five uh, regarding quorum meeting, we are not changing, we're not seeking or proposing to change. Uh, a, a quorum from consisting of, of three commission members. However, um, current municipal code. Includes a, a slightly unique feature um, that, that states that three uh, votes are required to. Uh, adopt or reject a motion and um, that is a bit unique statewide. I believe we only located one other municipality that has that requirement in the state of Montana. Um, typically a, a motion passes with a, a majority of the members present and so. Uh, you may recall, we had a situation this summer uh, where we had two members that were absent and so we had three commissioners present. Uh, we were still able to have a quorum, um, but had one of those commissioners. Uh, not been in favor of one of the items before them or uh, again, if two had been not in favor and one was in favor. Um, the, the item actually would not have passed and would have been brought back before uh, the commission at subsequent meeting and so. Uh, a, upon the recommendation of people council, um, this is, this is a, a, a change that we are seeking to make. And then uh, I would also point out that uh, the Juneteenth. Uh, holiday is, is now a federal holiday uh, recognized in June by the federal government and so. Uh, our handbook and our collective bargaining agreements uh, do call for recognition of that holiday. Uh, so we just wanted to conform municipal code uh, with, with the rest of our, our documents there. So. Uh, that is a, a summary of the, the recommended changes. Um, and I will, before I stand for any questions, I would also note, um, there was a state law. Uh, change that changed the noticing requirements and so uh, section two dash twelve. Uh, slightly modifies the, the noticing requirements, really just to state that in addition to the official posting board will also. Uh, act in accordance with the requirements of Montana code annotated as they may change. So uh, again, stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions. Uh, Commissioner Lyons.
So please excuse me if I'm. Misinterpreting what I'm reading. Uh, but on page fifty of the packet, uh, regarding the quorum and the um, required. Is or eyes or nays. I don't see the red line. Effectively making the change.
That's an excellent question, Commissioner. I've actually mistaken it. So the part that's crossed out, it's. It's supposed to be the affirmative vote of um, a majority of the commissioners present. So I have. And city attorney and I have gotten in each other's way on that.
Okay, so it should read the, the. The new language should read the affirm, the affirmative vote of the majority. Of commissioners present at the meeting. That's correct, not three.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering what that too is.
And that's all. I apologize for the uh, the inconvenience there as I said. Couple people editing this.
Will you state that one more time for us, please?
Yes, so that the second sentence in section two fifteen should read. The affirmative vote of a majority of commissioners present at a meeting. Shall be necessary to adopt or reject any motion, resolution or ordinance or pass any measure unless a greater number is required by law. May I jump in again?
Yes, I'm sorry, just one.
So. I wanna, you know, just produce a scenario here. So. Uh, we have a quorum when there are three commissioners. So in order, if there is only, if there are only three commissioners. Two votes in the affirmative are necessary for an item to pass.
Or be rejected, that is correct.
Yes. Well, no, two in the affirmative are required.
Yes.
For it to pass.
Yep, although if the motion, yes, two, two votes passes a motion if three are present.
Yes, thank you. And then I guess, well, let's keep doing scenarios. If there are four present, it would require three in the affirmative.
That's correct. Unless state law required more than that.
Are there specific decisions where state law requires a certain number?
Uh, yes, the most immediate example I can think of is uh, changing zoning.
And what, what does state law say for that?
I believe that uh, we would require four fifths in that situation.
The super majority.
So we would need a full, we would need all commissioners and four out of five.
Well, if four were present, then three would hit, hit the super majority of the vice chair Newton said. Uh, yes.
Three out of four is not.
Three out of four is a super.
It's a super majority, but it's not. Four fifths.
No, I had the requirement is a super majority.
Not four fifths.
But, but if there are three, two would be insufficient for a zoning.
Uh, no, because that would be a super majority at sixty-six percent.
Might be two thirds.
So is it?
It's a super majority.
Senatorial definition of super majority.
But we, um, this actually came up this, this summer. Um, and we did the scenario with the, the city attorney, um, leading to that, that meeting. And so I do believe that that would be two thirds of. Could confirm it at the next reading of the ordinance when the city attorney will be here.
Yeah, could we kind of go through all those scenarios in the, on our second reading? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it would, if I may, I'm stepping on your toes. Um, I think it would be helpful if. We don't particularly looked at some of those where it's a super majority or two thirds vote and really. Dig into, is that two thirds of the entire commission or of the forum?
No, I, I, we've looked at it before and I'll have the city attorney um, present those lines as we, the, the paths.
Yeah, just for the, for those special circumstances, right? Yes, you know, you know.
Um, just because this code that's quoted, the last sentence of this section two point. Or excuse me, two dash fifteen. Um, emergency budget appropriations and adopted by two thirds of. The members of a governing body who are present. Okay, so, yeah. It, I think there's, there's some other Livingston Municipal Code that requires a super majority. And I don't know if it, we indicate if it's people present or if it's members of the whole body.
I believe it is the zoning section related to the zoning change and I, I, but we will confirm.
There's, there's a section where commissioners can remove other commissioners from a meeting and I'm not saying that I ever expect that that is gonna happen.
I just happen to have this.
Right, I don't know that that would ever happen, but it certainly would be nice to have that conversation not. When a commission in the future would need to do that.
I appreciate the specificity in the example.
I know that's like a. It's an uncomfortable, it could happen, not this commission, some other commission.
Nobody wants to have that conversation in the midst of that happening.
No, somebody, not us. Um, the other. If I may, the other um, point is I think Commissioner Lyons. Um, when he was describing something, addressed a concern that I have, the language, adopt or reject any motion. I wonder if we could reconsider that language to be more clear. Where we could just say, I don't know if this is the best language we can ask an attorney, but shall be necessary, necessary to pass a motion? Otherwise, I think the implication is, right? Because if a motion isn't made, if a motion is made in the affirmative and it doesn't pass. We didn't make a motion to reject and there wasn't a vote to reject. It's just that the motion didn't pass. So there might be a way to clean up this language. So we're not having to make two motions on everything. Does that make sense?
It does. Um, I am happy to chat with, with. With city attorney. Please know we've had several groups of attorneys look at this, as you know, over the course of the last two years that I've been here.
Yeah.
And this was the language with the exception, the type of graph where this was the language that. Those groups of attorneys came to, so I'll happily put that back to them, but.
I just have never seen this anywhere in any voting. Anything in all the code that I've ever read where it says adopt or reject, because I think it implies. They have to vote to reject something when not passing is a rejection, although that's not explicit necessarily in emotion. So. Just to simplify for. Future potential contentious votes. Now that could be like a thing to clarify. Um, and I know since I've been on the commission, I know this was a, there's like the hidden curriculum, the written curriculum of. Being a commissioner and that hidden curriculum was how to make motions in the affirmative or not, and I don't think that we changed that, but this implies. I don't know, there's been different implications from different chairs over time about how to make motions.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, kinda. Yeah, you can't make a motion and.
Yeah, but I don't know the.
But yeah.
So if there's a way to like perhaps address that and just clean it up, so it's less confusing. Moving forward, I think that would be helpful, that little phrase.
That would, yeah. We will have the city attorney weigh in on that.
Yeah. And I think Commissioner Lyons already got to my other question about majorities and super majorities, so thanks. That's my big thing from this section.
This is just clarifying, right?
Clarifying question, so I was gonna remind us of that. Vice Chair Newt used to help the floor. I'm done, okay. Any other clarifying questions, commissioners?
Make a motion takes five minutes before we go public comment, when you deem that necessary.
Okay, I will, we will do that, absolutely. Um. I'm gonna ask Commissioner, I'm gonna ask Mr. Gager. So we've got this. We've kind of fixed the, the typo in here. For, and now we've discussed this other portion. Can we make a motion to move this forward? And you're gonna bring this, you're gonna check in on the rest of this with the, I just wanna check in for clarity here.
If, if, if the commissions council will move that forward, that is an option. If you folks would like to defer action until a, a subsequent meeting. Uh, may just ask that you continue the public hearing to a date certain to do so.
Commissioners.
There's one more reading of this and then after that, it's a. Two weeks and then we vote. So we'll see this two more times.
Say it one more time.
Oh, yeah, one more time.
One more time. So we can vote on it tonight with the. Fixed with the edit that was just a, a typo. Um, and then look at it, we'll look at it again and then vote it forward. But that's all up to you, do we want?
And I'm wondering. I'm just gonna hear what the legal uh, opinion is on the approve or reject. But that was a substantive change potentially to that paragraph. They may wanna hold off.
I, I, I would offer not only the city attorney, but the insurance company's attorney have looked at that language and that is the recommended language from our city attorney as well as the insurance company and their attorney. So, um, we can bring it back and have a discussion with them present, but.
Sure. All right, that alleviates my concerns.
I have a motion, oh, Commissioner Lyons.
My take is that. The, the spirit of what we're doing will remain the same. Um, and we, we really just need like technical clarification on, on. You know, I think if we had, if the city attorney were here today, we'd probably be able to, to get through it. And I, I don't think that the, the spirit of. The um, of the code is likely to change, even if there are going to be some changes to verbiage, so. You know, folks know what we're voting on. They know the direction that we're voting on it. There's gonna be another public. Public opportunity to participate in that. That seems sufficient to me. So I'm, I'm comfortable uh, moving it forward.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance three zero five five. With the edits to section two dash fifteen regarding forum.
A motion by Schwartz, so a second, was it second by Lyons? Okay, thank you. All right, so may I have a motion for a ten minute break?
Make a motion to take a ten minute break.
Second, a motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we will be back in ten minutes, so that'll be. All right, welcome back. We're gonna go ahead and call back to order this uh, meeting of the city commission. Um, it's seven oh eight P M. Um, and so we have got a motion on the table um, for ordinance three zero five five. Uh, and we will go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment? Anyone online? Would anyone online like to make public comment on ordinance thirty fifty-five? Feel free to come off mute. Give us your name. One more time, any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Thank you for getting up. Um, so commissioners, any deliberation, further discussion? On ordinance thirty fifty-five?
I'll make a comment. I'm glad to see Juneteenth, recognize it's a federal holiday and. Long time coming, way too long. And uh, I'm glad we observe it. I yield.
Thank you. Other comments or deliberation? Right. Thank you. Uh, roll call please.
Chair Cale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Willach.
For.
Motion carries. That leads us to the manager comments. Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Cale. A note to the city commission, I will be out of the office early next week attending the uh. City managers conference in Pittsburgh. And so I hope to learn more from my colleagues there and then the following week. Uh, right after our next meeting, we will be in West Ellis, going to League of Cities and Towns. So. Uh, I will be available by phone and email, but might not be in person a few days next week and also following. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Willach.
Uh, two new things. I guess, um, I got to ride in the new garbage truck last week. Um, Mark, what's that gentleman's name?
Matt.
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 Uh, took me for a ride and we went to the dump. It's very cool. The new machine is. Super nice. Surprisingly, it has two steering wheels and sets of pedals and everything. So that's. Kind of wild when you get into it. And that thirty thousand pounds of garbage per day, the waste collection picks up. And the one machine picks up nine hundred cans a day with the arm. So uh, I thought that was pretty, pretty good to know. And we have, I believe, a new machine coming as well. Uh, it's been on order for a little while. You guys ordered that up and that should make uh, garbage collection in our city. Just that much more seamless. So that was, uh, that was very cool. I'm glad I got to go uh, on that. And also I wanted to uh, perhaps speak to, if anybody's listening.
And also, I wanted to, uh, perhaps speak to, if anybody's listening, with Burlington Northern. Um, they've moved all of the cars off of the tracks. If you haven't noticed, we can see from the north end to the south end. And I love it when they do that. So I want to say thank you to whoever made that decision to move all those cars around. Cause, uh, it's nice to be able to see the whole, whole other side of town with a, a bunch of grain and train stuff in the way. So, yeah, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilich. Commissioner Lyons.
I have nothing to add to the conversation. Thank you.
Commissioners, Scott.
Um, with the exception of, uh, getting involved with the, uh, Parks Master Plan, I have nothing else. Are you?
Vice Chair Newt, I will say, what does it take for a commissioner to get a ride in a truck? You can rave about public works for six years and still not be offered a ride in a truck. I mean.
I just said it right, I guess.
Dusty gets a new truck. The next one coming, I think, yeah. The guy that I know, he does.
You know a guy.
I know a guy, yeah.
I mean, I thought I knew a guy, but I guess I'm just wrong. I don't know a guy. I also would say, I, uh, appreciate that we're going to hear about the crossing. Again, I hope it actually does not take several months before it comes to us. Um, that's sort of been the status quo, as long as I've been a commissioner and we've gotten effectively nowhere. And. It's frustrating and we need to do better. And so I hope that we can keep the conversation moving forward about what solutions look like for folks, um, crossing tracks. And all the people that ask Commissioner Schwartz and I questions, you heard that Mr. Gager is going to be out of town for a while. So it's going to take a while for me to get answers to all your questions. Since he won't be here and that's okay, because he's still working, doing other things, but it's just going to take a minute.
I thank you all for, uh, lovely meeting this evening, um, and all the, and the public comment was very appreciative. Um, yes, please get involved in the Parks Master Plan and in the reservoir park geo design project. Energy Action Plan is coming. If you have not signed up for the Livingston newsletter, I would highly encourage you to do so. Tons of really great information in there. So if you're able, I would encourage that. Um, what I have this evening, I have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz. All in favor? Motion carries, uh, this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven fourteen.